Would like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council in our work session on this Tuesday, July the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And welcome everyone who's joined us. We're missing one council member who's on a family vacation this week, so we'll excuse him. And the rest are present. So, and we have our directors and some of our city, other city workers here with us this evening. So we'll turn first item over our drinking water sanitary report and we'll turn time over to our-
Start with me if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll start with you.
Hey, we love, we have two items on our work session and they're both really good news. And so we are gonna start with Neil. He's gonna walk us through what this drinking water report means. And I believe he sent you an email. I think you saw what this was, but I want him to come and then bring those that are responsible for us really getting our water system in a good place. So I'll turn it to Neil.
Mayor and council, thanks for having us today. I'm gonna have them come up in just a minute and I'm gonna actually ask Drew to say a couple of things. It's estimated that fifty times a day you access a plumbing fixture in some way. And the understanding that it's all gonna work as planned, coming out of the faucet and going down the drain, and, and that it's gonna be clean and reliable and abundant is, is the expectation we have. And perfection is the ultimate expectation that we have. Every three years, the Division of Drinking Water through the state of Utah performs a sanitary survey is what it's called. And it is essentially a white glove test where they look at every piece of our system to determine if there are vulnerabilities to challenges with water quality. And the last one we had was last week. And I'm gonna read the letter, if you might let me, that was sent to the mayor. And it might as well been sent to the entire citizenry of Pleasant Grove. Then I'll ask Drew and those mentioned in here and including John Shees, who is a consultant who's worked with Pleasant Grove City. John, for the last about three years, has come on Tuesday mornings and reviewed his thirty years nearly of history with our water team. And they have bounced ideas off each other related to how to improve our system. John was one of the first on the scenes a few years ago who climbed up Battle Creek with a forty-pound valve key in his hand to go make adjustments heading into dark at about seven o'clock at night. That's the kind of commitment John has given to Pleasant Grove City. Although not an employee, we've really appreciated him. And there's, and Drew's gonna talk a little bit more about the team. But I'm gonna read the letter that came from the state of Utah. "My name is Tom McComey and I serve as the Emergency Response Program Manager with the Division of Drinking Water for the state of Utah. In this role, I have the privilege of observing and evaluating water systems across the state. I conduct more than thirty sanitary surveys annually along with level-two assessments and ongoing technical assistance for numerous systems. On July eighth, I had the opportunity to conduct a sanitary survey of your water system alongside Drew Hoffman, Derek Rowberry, and Trevor Workman. I want to take a moment to personally commend Pleasant Grove City for the outstanding condition, operation, and management of your water system. I was genuinely impressed. The system is not only extremely well-maintained, clean, organized, and thoughtfully managed, but it is also evident that your team takes great pride in their work. The professionalism, dedication, and attention to detail demonstrated by your water operators reflect a strong commitment to excellence and public health. What stood out most during this inspection was that I did not issue a single deficiency, an outcome that is exceptionally rare. In fact, this is almost unheard of in the course of my work. It is a true testament to the caliber of your staff and the high standards you uphold. Unfortunately, not all systems across the state operate at this level, which is why I felt compelled to formally acknowledge your team's effort. I do not write letters like this often. They are reserved for those who truly distinguish themselves. Pleasant Grove has done just that. Please extend my sincere thanks and congratulations to everyone involved. Your system is a model for others to follow, and your work exemplifies the best of what we hope to see in drinking water systems throughout Utah." Thank you. I'm gonna- Outstanding. I'm gonna let Drew say a few words and I'm gonna let you guys congratulate them personally. And I'll step away. John, if you can come up as well and introduce our team here.
Yeah, so I'm Drew Hoffman, Water and Sewer Division Manager. Hope you all know that. Derek Rowberry, he is our water quality foreman. And Trevor Workman, he's our culinary water foreman. And all I can say, it's really good to be standing here right now with a letter like that instead of letters you guys have received in the past. And, and that's our ultimate goal, is to never have that again. And we have assembled a team that I think, this is just one stepping stone for us. This is the first step. We, we have a long way to go in our eyes to make additional improvements and keep building on this. And all I wanna say is, is thanks to you and, and your, your funding and, and your personnel, letting us hire the personnel we need to get this done. That's what it takes to, to maintain a top-notch water system. And you guys have allowed us to do that. And I hope you'll continue to allow us to do that and keep building on the, on what we've started. Because we'll, by the time the three of us are gone, you'll have a legacy water system that, that'll, it'll be a top-notch system by the time we're done with it. So-
That's awesome.
Yeah, this team here, we have, our water team right now is an excellent team. These guys all contributed, they all dove in. It's been a lot of work in three years. Some of these fixes take a day. The biggest fixes have taken us two years to get those completed with the chlorinator project. And so, yeah, it's, it's not easy and it's not cheap for, for the city, but it needed to be done and, and we're on the right path. John Shees, as Neil mentioned, is an invaluable asset because he has thirty years of knowledge of our water system. We're all relatively new, you know? Trevor's probably our most tenured person, the three of us, and he's been here four years. So, we don't have a lot of knowledge of the system. And, and that's where John has been our crutch and he has really, really helped us out with learning the system and, and helping us with any questions we had. So, yeah, a lot of kudos to him too in this. He helped us as much as anybody. And our team's great and these guys can go ahead and say something they want unless you have questions for me. Any questions you guys have?
No.
No, we've come a long ways. Great, great work, great work.
And thank you guys too.
What, what can we do when John Shees says that he doesn't wanna do this anymore?
Well, we're, that's what those weekly meetings are for. We have a weekly meeting every Tuesday for an hour. And we're trying to suck out pieces of John's brain for an hour at a time and document those within us so that we can, so that we have that knowledge, you know? And, and John won't retire. He, he's, Pleasant Grove is in, in, instilled in his soul, I think. He's, yeah.
I know that he has some cabin property that he wants to add to. Long-term.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, you guys wanna say anything?
I mean, really, I just wanna say thank you. Cause I was here on the last one and it was embarrassing. Like, it was right when I first started and I, I legit was like, this is horrible. You know, going through that and then seeing what it has done. And I mean, big props to, you know, Drew and Neil and all you guys for allowing us and, you know, believing in us to do this, so.
Love it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all we have unless you guys have anything else.
No, just thanks. That's awesome.
You bet.
We've come a long ways and it's your work, so thank you.
You gotta get, you gotta get John to say something. You gotta get someone to say something.
But can we get that letter and that to the residents? And I don't know how, oh, we actually talked about today, the executive staff. I think we should try to say something.
I was thinking this afternoon when they invited me to come today, I was thinking, Drew and Neil are driving this boat. And these guys, the staff, they're the ones that are rolling. I'm just along for the ride, so. And enjoying it and appreciate the, the opportunity to help wherever I can, so.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, John.
We should name some pipes that she's-
Name a pipe after John.
Yeah, we have a policy on that.
On pipes as well?
Oh, yeah, everything.
He's gotta be dead first.
That's funny, that's good.
So our second item on the agenda is Utopia. They called up yesterday and asked to be rescheduled, so we're moving them to August nineteenth. They were just gonna come give us an update on subscribers and things like that. So with that, next up is Sierra and Kasia, who I asked to go and interview people at the Cook Family Park. We wanna know why they're coming, where they're coming from, and that type of stuff. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Sierra and we got a PowerPoint that, that they're gonna do.
Okay, like Scott said, it's been great. We've been going out the last little bit to talk with residents and visitors to Cook Family Park, to just ask them a few questions, do a four-question survey. Let me get this. Yeah. Perfect. And as part of our process, we went out to the park and talked with the visitors at the park and just wrote down their responses to our survey. We've been doing this for about the last two weeks and during that time have visited the park about ten times throughout different parts of the day. We wanted to make sure the survey was comprehensive, comprehensive and really got a feeling for who was visiting the park at the, at all times of the day. And with going out that many times, we were able to talk to just over two hundred visitors at the park. And we're just gonna go through each of our questions and kinda talk about those results.
Yeah, so we wanted to keep the survey simple. We just asked four questions. Where are you visiting from? What facilities or amenities are you visiting today? How often you're here, or if that was either, you know, your first time visiting? And then if those visitors had any intentions or had already visited like a local business, maybe picked up some lunch or something while they were in town.
So like Kasia mentioned, our first question that we asked visitors were where they were visiting from. And I do think this maybe got our most surprising results.
What?
What we found was that seventy-seven percent of-
Alabama?
From Alabama, we actually had more than one.
They better beat it in our restaurants, stay in our hotels, that's all I can say.
Yep. But yeah, we found that seventy-seven percent of the visitors at the park were from outside of Pleasant Grove. And with that, we had people from all around the state of Utah. We had thirty-four cities represented and that went from as far as Logan to Blanding to St. George. So we really had people from all around the state visiting as well as people from seventeen different states. And people mentioned that while some of them were coming and visiting people that lived in town or cities surrounding, some actually just saw the park on social media, knew they were driving through Utah and said, "We're gonna stop by during that drive." And then we also thought we'd add on that we did have one friend from Canada also that was in town and decided to visit the park. So, we are an international park.
Yep, they got their own leaf.
Yep, their own leaf. And kinda diving a little bit deeper, we wanted to kinda highlight some of our most frequent visitors. As a point of reference, Pleasant Grove had about forty-six survey, people from Pleasant Grove, we had about forty-six surveys done. But as you can see, we just really had people from all around Utah County that were visiting the park as well as people from the surrounding area. But I think this really just highlights that this is a regional park. People are coming from all around the county as well as the state to come see the park and visit our amenities.
Yeah, so in regards to our second question-
Kasia, please speak.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We just asked what park features people were using that day of the visit. With it being summer, it's no surprise that the most frequented amenity was the splash pad. And we had those who were surveyed answer as many as their kids were using that day. So that's why it doesn't equal one hundred. But, so of course, splash pad playground were the most popular. Those who used the pump track were also visiting the skate park usually. And then we thought it was interesting. We had a lot of people say that they were coming all the way from Salt Lake County to use the footsall courts. So, yeah, that was, that was another popular amenity. And then in terms of question three, this was the question about whether they'd visited a local business. So we had about thirty-six percent say that they had like gone somewhere before or after or had intentions to visit both. And we thought that was pretty significant. And also with the no's, there was the caveat that some people just said, you know, "We usually do or not today." So we marked them as a no, but that could be higher or lower depending on the day.
And those would be the good ones that were from town too.
Yeah, yep. And then we just wanted to throw this together. These were some of our top businesses mentioned. Our top two actually were Purple Turtle and Taco Amigos. So it's kinda fun that those are the Pleasant Grove classics.
Yay.
Yep. Thirst and Macy's were also pretty popular. Macy's for the con cones, the kids love to go get some ice cream after the splash pad. But just thought this was kinda fun.
And then our last question we asked was, since the park opened, how often people had come and visited the park? Really, we saw the majority of our surveys, people, this was their first or third time visiting. I think that makes sense with how many people we are seeing come from outside of Pleasant Grove to visit the park. A lot of people, this was their first visit. But what we really saw was those who were visiting four or five times, weekly, daily, those were our Pleasant Grove residents. A lot of the people were saying, you know, "I live just down the street and we come daily to the park." So it was really great to just see that not only are people just checking out the park, but we have people that are coming repeatedly and especially our residents are being able to utilize our feature, the park's features.
Yeah, so overall, the comments we got were overwhelmingly positive. These were some of our favorite and most like significant comments. A lot of people mentioned that they loved the shade options. That was maybe our most popular comment. Also, we got a lot saying they loved how all of the amenities were in like one general location so they could keep their eyes on all their kids at once while they were running around. We got a few shout-outs from the parks workers, which I thought was awesome. They loved that there was a presence there, that they were, you know, picking up trash, answering questions, and just being helpful. So we thought that was pretty awesome. Another big comment we got was that it was TikTok or Instagram that drew people to the park. So we wanted to highlight a couple of those popular videos. We looked across all three of the most popular platforms, TikTok, Reels, YouTube. TikTok has a video right now with over three million views, fifty-nine thousand likes. And that was just one. They started a hashtag Cook Family Park, which is, if you have time in your free time to look at it, there's some fun stuff in there. Reels also had one that went pretty viral, one point five million likes. And then YouTube has a couple of cool, like, there's a footsall account that posts about footsall usage and then also the skate, like a skateboarder that will go in every couple of days and film some stuff there. So, pretty cool stuff on social media.
Yes, but like we said, we were very surprised and happy with those results. We feel like overall, both Pleasant Grove residents and those just visiting the park are really enjoying everything it has to offer and we just see it having such a great benefit to our community. But we're happy to answer any questions you guys have about the results.
Was there any difference between water park versus, versus playground?
Um, we did-
That you noticed?
We did see the, the splash pad was pretty popular.
Yeah.
That was definitely, I would say, the most popular feature that people mentioned. A lot of people were coming just to use the splash pad.
That's, that was the question.
Yes. But a few people did mention, "We came just for the splash pad, but then our kids saw that playground and they are spending half their time over at the playground." And so with that question, that was kind of, we did mark the playground if they did mention that, but quite a few people were just coming for the splash pad that day.
And then one more question, were they eating? And what, and what were they eating? If they were eating?
Yeah, we saw a few people eating. We saw Chipotle, McDonald's. Some people did pizza. Some people did say they swung by Macy's and picked up a few snacks and they were eating there. But I think with our results, we did see quite a few people, if we were going in the morning, saying, "We're gonna swing by this place for lunch after the park."
Okay, awesome. Just what I needed, thank you.
Absolutely.
Now, are you, is there anything you're doing specifically with this information? Or, and are you going to do another survey down the road? What, what's your goal with the survey?
Yeah, I think we've talked about doing a survey maybe again next year to compare the results, just so we can see, especially with that, we have so many people that are visiting from outside Pleasant Grove. Are we maintaining that? Or is it kinda the hype with the grand opening being only a couple months ago? But yeah.
Yeah, we, we specifically did not do the surveys during Strawberry Days or the Fourth because we figured that could skew the data. Our intention is to, yes, do this again next year because I think the pump track and the footsall courts are two things that are pretty unique to Utah County. I don't think, I don't know if there's another pump track. There might be one other pump track. But a paved one that's like ours, I don't know if there's another one in Utah County. And footsall courts as well, I think are somewhat unique. And so, what, this is my experience. People are coming from out of town and then they're gonna go home and call their city council member and say, "How come we don't have footsall courts in our city?" And cities will start building them. And so I think over time, we will see that number go down as far as visitors from outside our city. And then we'll see, it will probably be, you know, our residents will be the ones that for sure will be the most taking advantage of it.
We shared this with the cooks.
So no, I was just thinking as they were presenting, this is the first time I've seen it. So, I, I'm gonna get with them and get with their family. They have a family meeting every, every couple of weeks. And I'll, I'll have Sierra and Kasia come and present that to them. I would prefer that we present that to the cooks first before we put this out on social media. I, I don't know if it's a, I mean, it's probably okay to talk about a couple of the, the things that we've talked about, but this, the formal PowerPoint, I, I don't want the cooks to see it for the first time on social media. I'd prefer that we have a chance to present it first. And then once we do that, cause that might still be a couple of weeks away, then, then we can turn it loose and, and let people know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Great job. Well, I guess we'll move on and start with our staff reports. So, Chief, you wanna start with the police and Brown? Always busy.
Thirty-eight minutes is all.
Yeah, what's the over-under? Mayor, city council, nice to see you. We also have been mentioned on social media. Some kind of apps called Places to Explore. And one of the things listed is Evermore Park. The only thing is, you gotta scale the wall and break the law to get there.
Oh, no.
But it's, it's out there. So we responded the other night on six people who had scaled the wall and were going around Evermore exploring and, yeah, two AM. And exploring and spray painting inside buildings with cement paint cans, so.
There's actually been a lot of damage on the inside.
Yeah, so, and none of them are from this area. So, six juveniles were arrested and they'll be charged, referred to juvenile court for burglary and vandalism, stuff like it. So how it gets out there and who puts that there, I don't know. And I don't know how you take it down. So that, that's a concern, we'll be watching that. Been, and pretty busy in a number of places. They like Cook Family Park so much, they don't leave when it's closing time. So we've been up there a couple of times to, to invite them to leave. They're just having a good time, you know, hanging out there, juveniles, you know, after ten o'clock. So, which is, I get it. But, so we've been up there a few times and we've encouraged our officers to go up there to run closing time to kind of just be a visual presence and help them leave. And, and what concerns me right now is the, the vandalism to the parks that's been done down in Provo. I don't know who that is.
Saw that.
I don't know what they're up to, but it's, it's extensive damage. Yeah. So, so we're, I don't wanna be the next park targeted by a bunch of fun haters, whoever they are. We'll see how Provo makes progress on that. Another concerning topic around here is car versus motorcycle, car versus bicycle accidents. We had another one today. Today's was minor injury, but in the last month or even going back to the, the young Dalton boy. You know, that's six substantial injuries and or fatalities in the last, you know, six weeks this year, something like that. Most of them have been the fault of the motorist, not the cyclist. Today was, it was the cyclist's fault, but it's concerning. And Castell's been full of motorcycle fatalities, those accidents. So we're just not spotting the motorcycles, we're not spotting the bicyclists. We're not being very vigilant and we're just in a fast-paced society, everybody's in a hurry. And it's concerning. Along with that, we've did have a collision up on the Murdoch Trail. A dog and a bicycle, an unleashed dog. That lady was transferred to the hospital with broken ribs. She collided with a dog and so we issued a citation for the, to the dog owner. She felt really bad about that, her dog just behaved.
Was the dog on a leash?
No. It wasn't this, and she says she's ran by my side the whole time. But when the little bell rang, I think that kinda startled the dog. And, and so they had a little collision there. But we've been up and around the Murdoch, I've been up there a couple of times myself. It is a busy place. It's an attractive place. It's like, it's like your park. It's a great place for people to get out and recreate, but there's a lot of people and it creates the need to be watchful for what goes on up there and make sure just people have a good, safe time. So, we have our hands full with normal business at hand. The juveniles, I need school to start next week so they can get back in school, but they won't come fast enough. Just a lot, a lot of, a lot of calls. But we got a good workforce. Did a couple promotions today, a couple new sergeants, Rick Henderson and Alex Garcia. Were promoted today and things have happened. Our academy students are doing well and on course to graduate here, one in August, one in September. So good things happening in your police department and any question? We've had the speed trailer out there. I walked up on that area that we had talked about and that was blocked off or they paved that road. So, but we've had that speed trailer up there on Thirteenth West and stuff like that in some areas that people want some more enforcement and some of the speed trailer. And we're looking at purchasing another speed trailer or two to have them out in different areas of the city to just slow vehicles down. We're just getting some bids on that right now, but we intend to buy a couple of those so we can have more disposal to put out there in various parts of the city and slow the traffic down.
Do you get data out of those trailers?
Yeah, those are more expensive trailer, but one of them will be a data collection trailer. And yeah, it will just be a speed monitoring thing. But yeah, they're, you pay for it, but yeah, they're a little pricey, but we're gonna get a couple of those.
I don't think you're gonna get your visitors back from LA and New York, the generous amount of visitors? That was quite interesting.
That was quite interesting.
Yeah.
Yep, so, yeah, there you go. Anything else?
Anything, council?
Nope.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Appreciate it.
Sherry.
Well, you probably noticed we've been busy. Library's been cycling a lot of kids through and a lot of adults. Kasia went to our trivia night that we had. And she is one of the people we've been, one of the age range, I should say, that we've been trying to get into the library. So I, I love that she went.
Finally, she's gonna start reading.
Well, this was trivia night, so.
Did she win?
She says no, but she will next time. So, but that was one of our, our goals, was to reach different groups than, that aren't served as much by our community or by our, you know, we just don't have as many offerings for them. So, the twenty-somethings and, and other groups. And so it was fun to see people coming out to that, that's been popular. Bingo night has been very popular. I started to think, why, why didn't I just start doing things they do on cruise ships a long time ago? But both of them, super popular. We did-
Like, who comes up with bingo night?
Similar age range, adults, so twenty to forty mostly.
What's the prize?
It depends on the week.
Like, is-
We do always have a prize and we do not charge to play.
We do have lawn courses.
That's fun, that's awesome.
Yeah. And we're doing both of those every month. And Dungeons and Dragons, we're getting twenty-five kids now. So we set up several tables at a time. So we've, we're bringing in a lot of people that don't have other places necessarily, or do, but it's- or do, but it's still fun for them.
They still choose you.
Right, exactly. We did have our teen movie night, watching Jaws at the pool, and...
Oh, no, what?
Jaws took a vacation.
Jaws took a vacation. We paid to have someone come from, he even drove from Idaho, brought this blow-up screen, sound system and everything, and then couldn't get it set up. So we had like 100-something kids there. And they never got it set up, but the pool staff was awesome, and they got extra things going, and still made it fun.
Oh, really? So you couldn't show it at all?
No.
Oh, dang it.
No, by the time he was, he finally had things figured out, we had to close down because people had, you know.
Oh, shoot.
Kids.
Technology faux pas has happened.
Yes, they do. And, you know, it was a free event, they can't complain too much, but, and they still had fun. And I, so I do really appreciate the pool staff coming in and really helping us out. And coming up, we have fencing class.
Really?
And the person teaching it is a world fence, six-time world fencing champion.
Julie?
Uh-huh. And then on July 29th, we have our summer reading art gala. So come be fancy with us and look at the wonderful art that was created during summer reading. We've got, we'll have snacks, music, and displays everywhere. So it'll be at 6:00.
On what day?
On Tuesday, July 29th. There is no council that night, from 6:30 to 7:30, and then we'll also still have the art up the next, all of the next day, too.
Are we pushing that out, on social media?
I'm sure we are. We're pretty good about that.
Thoughts on a Summer Ween event? Can I get your thoughts?
A summer what?
Summer Ween? It's Halloween only in the summer.
That does sound dicky.
It's not. It's quite amazing, Sherry.
Does the name sound dicky? I'm sure the event would be awesome.
We'll chat.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Dionne? It's about the parks and the trails.
Well, they're all busy. We kind of have a couple of weeks where we can actually get in and do our things that we need to. We finally finished up Follow the Flag Monday, getting that all wrapped up, and we preparing for summer abrasion is our next big one. But yeah, things are going good, lots of mowing, lots of, lots of irrigation, those types of things. Yeah, I think, I think that's it for us. We just, we like this next couple of weeks because we get a break to get in and get things done, where we're not spread out, you know, doing other things, so.
It's just so damn hot.
It is hot. Today was not too bad with the clouds, but, yeah, we could do the clouds and the heat, I could do that, so.
Dionne, how's the batting cages holding up?
Really good. They're still being used quite heavily, especially in the mornings when it's cool, there's quite a few people. It's, it's interesting, there's, I want to say, I've probably seen more girls doing softball in there than I have boys, but, but it, it does get used, so.
I've noticed the grass between the park, between the Cook Valley Park, between the, like, the footsall and the playground. It's, that's, yeah, it's hard. I mean, I get it, right? That's, you're trying to water a slope, and it's, it's hard. What are your thoughts there?
Well, we had a big discussion with the landscape company on Thursday last week, and they're in this week adjusting every head in the park. Before they really turn it over to us, there's a lot of issues with it, but we have not had control of the controller, the irrigation controller. It's kind of a policy that they have, but they have not been on site either for a couple of weeks. And so we're getting that, this week, they're going through all the heads, getting that resolved. Tomorrow morning, 8 o'clock, we are meeting with the rep for weather track controllers. There's, it's quite a process to get every valve programmed correctly. We'll start that process tomorrow, and then hopefully within a couple of weeks, you'll see that place green up. There's a few more spots that we're aware of that we're just not happy with what's happening. So, yeah, I think, I think you'll see a change in that the next couple of weeks. If it does not come back, within the next couple of weeks, you'll see them replace some of that sod.
Okay. I mean, it's, what's going to have to happen is you're going to have to turn it on, soak it, turn it off, you know, do, do a soak cycle.
Oh, definitely.
Right, or if not, it's going to, just going to run off.
Definitely, yeah, and that's, that's one thing.
If you can't control the controller, it makes it hard.
Well, and another issue was, you had your, your job superintendent on site, and another guy was running the controller off-site, so he would try to correlate, and it didn't work, so we're going to be in control of the controller hopefully by the end of this week, which will really help where we can do things on our end, so.
That's awesome.
No, that's been a concern of ours for quite a while, and we're finally getting it resolved, I hope, so.
Okay, awesome.
Yep.
Thanks, man.
You know, I, I didn't know that we've kind of got an ongoing with some volunteers on the G Trail that are working on that from time to time to keep that in good shape going up to the G, so.
I didn't know we did either, but.
Well, you need to talk to your next, next in command, because he was up there with some guys.
Oh, yeah, 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 so that's been, that's been kind of interesting. Kenny's been working with the Forest Service and the Dedicated Hunter Program, and removing thistle up there. He spent three weekends up there, averaging about 40 hours a day with volunteers removing the thistle along the trail, so that's been much appreciated. Yeah, he's, he spent at C2 with the last weekends in June, and then this last weekend up there. That's really helped us. He's, he's happy that we don't have to do it, there's a town down south that's doing it, and they have to cut all of the blossoms off and bag them and take them out before they can cut the thistle down, so. The Forest Service wasn't that specific with us, but they've got it completed, all the thistle along the trail are done, so that's awesome.
Wow, that thistle's just bad stuff.
Yep, and we're going to do it again next year, now that we're in with the Forest Service, and it's an approved program with them, we'll just, we'll start earlier next year when it's not so hot, and when the thistle's a lot smaller, so, but that'll be a huge help for us.
Yeah, it'd be great, anyway.
Any other questions?
That's a well-used trail.
Oh, it is, yes, it is. All of our trails are well-used, so, thank you.
Let's hear from the rec. At least you've got a cool building most of the time, where a lot of your stuff goes on, but not all of it.
Hallelujah. I'm in a long-sleeve shirt because it stays cool enough, and I like it, we're staying nice and cool inside. Not, well, there's plenty going on at the rec center right now. We're, we're staying busy, and it's crazy, and we love it, and we can't keep up with all the things, but it's good stuff. Coming up is summer abrasion on August 7th, so watch for that to come. Andy just does, she goes big or she goes home. There's not anything small that Andy does, so she's doing it around the wicked theme, so I think we'll see a lot more that's going on with that. She's added a whole new, a lot of new features to that, so we're really excited about that coming up, so make sure that's on your radar.
And I, I've sent you an appointment, it should be.
Perfect. I think she, I'm going to have to get back to you on it, but I think she has something she needs help with, like maybe some judges or something like that, that she'd like you guys to help with, so we'll get back to you on that, but, so that's coming up. We just got done on Friday with our foam party. This year, we added the BYU team to it, so Cosmo was there, and BYU brought in all sorts of games and things like that. Andy estimated, Scott, what would your estimate be of number of people there?
Well, I, I mean, at the given moment, I was there, there was probably 300 people.
Yeah, so I think, I think by the time it was all said and done, you know, 500 or 700, so somewhere around there, anyway, it was a really great turnout, so that event keeps getting bigger, so we, we loved that, it was super fun. We had that little scare at the pool just last week, but a huge shout-out to the fire department, and the great work that they do. It was not, I was in Island Park at the moment, so it was not something I was excited to, to deal with, and couldn't get there fast enough, but I was six hours away, but big shout-out to the fire department, to this, the swim crew, or the pool crew, Sean jumping in it, Scott was over there. Kyle even came back after they got the girl to the hospital. Kyle came back and checked in with the staff. We've got, David Packard got involved, got Ulysses, those employee services available pretty quickly, we had it available the next morning, so in all things considered, very well-responded in that situation, and, and very happy. She was actually at the pool that evening.
Wow.
Got released that morning, and then dad and daughter were back at the pool that evening and in a life jacket, so, so anyway, so.
Three-year-old?
Three-year-old, mm-hmm, yep. Scary moment there, but we're, we're pretty grateful and lucky to have this scenario play out that it did, and have the people in place to make that all happen and turn out well, so. So, yeah, I think that's all that I have to report on right now, unless there's any questions for me at the rec.
Thanks, Megan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Let's hear from our fire chief.
Saving lives and putting out fires.
Everybody's burning up.
Yeah, it's, it's been kind of a crazy few weeks, seems like, trying to catch up with everything. I actually took 4th of July week off, which I don't think I'll ever do again, that was terrible. It's kind of, just being with everybody, period, out somewhere else as opposed to work, I think you're rather work holidays, but that being said, it's, we've just been super busy, it's been kind of crazy. I started off with that Cedar Hills fire we had, you know, a few weeks ago, we'll talk about that a little bit later, because we're going to change some boundaries on that, but from there, you know, just coming in here with, between the pool, we got some motorcycle accidents, it's just been one after the other. Right now, so far as of this month, we're just over 100 calls already this month. And so we're kind of cruising along with everyone else, just kind of getting busy, and, you know, across our fingers, it won't keep like that, but it just seems like the city gets bigger and grows, and we're just kind of, we're keeping up with all this stuff. Our crew came back from the Forsyth Fire down in Pine Valley, I think it was, down by St. George, just five, six days ago, and they got shipped out a couple of days ago, and they're back down to the Deer Creek Fire down by, down by Moab, just down south of Moab a little bit, where I think you saw some of the videos that showed that little kind of tornado fire spinning around, or a second, they're down that fire right now, and so that fire's just doing some interesting things, but they'll, they've been keeping us busy in that respect with having that out there, having, keeping those guys going, so it's been good. I mean, it's, like I say, all these things going on, we're just, we're just kind of a piece of the puzzle with everyone else, between, you know, the rec center and us, we help each other out, we get through all the stuff, and it's, it worked out real good. Kyle, or Captain Hardy, he did super good after that incident with the child. He came back and talked with those, with the staff, kind of went through a bunch of things, and kind of hopefully made them feel, you know, things happen type of thing, but it, I think it worked out real well, it takes everybody to get through this stuff. You know, we're no special anybody else, but everybody together makes it work real good. I'm trying to think what else we've had, like I said, it's been super busy. We had guys on the, on the call up Silver, Silver Lake, the gentleman that drowned up there, we had a couple of guys up there helping with that recovery.
Such a sad story.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just interesting, kind of a, just strange, a little weird, you know, only, he's only like 31 years old, I think.
Was it, he, he jumped in to save a child?
So he had a, somebody on a tube had kind of floated out a little bit.
Yeah, floated out.
And there's a paddleboard there, he said, I'll just run out real quick and bring him back in closer to shore. We got out there, I don't know what happened, fell in the water, and never came up.
What was, what's the water temperature at Silver?
It's cold, that's cold.
That's Silver Lake's cold.
It is cold, yeah, yeah.
You, you lose muscle strength?
Yes.
Yeah, so he, he was about 15, 16 feet of water, they found him, you know, a few hours later, but, um, yes, we had guys up there helping with that. Then that evening, we sent a crew, handful of guys, down to Spanish Fork, they had a tanker truck that crashed, full of fuel, up near the top of Spanish Fork Canyon, so we had guys up that canyon for a while, just helping out with that, and so, like I say, it's been kind of busy with this team that we run with, the SRT team in the county, we work with all these cities, which has been getting busier and busier. I know we had a, we had a, I think, one of the smoke shops over here off State Street, a car took off, and it sounded like the car went through the building, but it didn't actually go through the building, but it came out as that, you know, but actually just punched the front window out of the, of the business, but, so we get called on stuff like that, so we're all between all these cities, and us, we're, you know, helping each other out and, and getting through all this stuff, and I think that's kind of pretty much, just like I say, we're just going, we're going to start doing some interviews for a part-time inspector to help Chief Larson out with getting some of that things done, so we can take care of some other training issues with, with the other crews and do things like that, so, and then that, things are just going good and having fun, I guess, so.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Was, there was a fire, hold on, there was a fire up above Murdoch?
Yeah, we've had a couple, we've had a few things, there's one up Grove Creek, right there at the corner of it, right below the, the water that we, that was.
Shocking that it wasn't in Eric's neighborhood, quite frankly, but, you know.
It's been pretty quiet over there, so I'm not going to say, I don't want, I'm not jinxing anything.
It has, but was it, was it a, was it a fully?
So we've had a couple of things with trash can fires between that one, one out on the west side, a little, that was off the boulevard off the west side, 20, 200 West, somewhere over there, and we're not sure if we've got somebody kind of driving around throwing fireworks out windows or what, yeah, we've heard a few things that were similar, but we've had a couple of close calls, and with the Cedar Hills fire, that's why we're, like I said, we'll talk to you a little bit later about this, the boundary change, but we, we wanted to make sure we were, you know, got our ducks in a row, make sure we're trying to keep everybody safe, but, yeah, we've had some, it's that time of the year, everything's super dry, we're super, you know, aware of what's going on, and we want to make sure that nothing happens in our, in our part of the city, so we're, we've been super vigilant about watching that, so.
Great, thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Neil?
Summertime creates a lot of different items for us to attend to. Roadway projects are going well, we did have a little bit of a hiccup, and I say "we", I mean, the contractor did, where they had some quality control issues, but rest assured, they have acknowledged those, and they're going to fix some of that micro-surfacing that is coming up, and then when you get the triple digits on a west-facing hillside, some of those vehicles that end up turning their tires in there can chew that up pretty good as well, so we'll, we'll go spot-treat those, and then hopefully they'll have time to cure, and, and things will look good that way. You'll, you see, the rec center has the generator project going on that, that we're taking care of as well. That should finish up as soon as parts get in and things are able to, we, it's a delicate job there, because there's a lot of conduits already serving the building, and so just working around that to make sure that we don't hit anything there. That generator will serve the rec center as an emergency shelter, as you recall, in the, in an emergency, have backup power for that. The street projects are underway, and they're just going, and they, they end up having to have water shut-offs here and there, but we notify the residents, give them 48 hours notice when, when we're aware, and then, as you've seen the news in Provo, they had a pretty large leak, and.
Large leak?
Well, the, the thing is, is that, that's a day in the life, and so just because it got high, and there was someone with a phone there in the middle of the day, you know, those are things that we actively deal with all the time. I mean, we were, and I say "we", the crews on, on Thursday night were up on Cherokee, Cleardale Midnight, you know, fixing a water leak that was coming out pretty well. So, so that's just a routine event that is part of.
How do you get those guys better on social, on taking pictures?
I took some pictures, but I didn't want to share them because there was a guy not wearing a hard hat, so I didn't, I didn't want to share those, and that's, that's the honest truth. We've, we've already taken care of that, but.
You don't share that.
Anyway, the, the water situation, it's, it's been hot. We haven't had appreciable rain for almost three months now, and so Dionne put it a little bit lightly, when Todd, when you said, what about that, that's unacceptable, and 100%, and we made that very clear to the contractor, that that is unacceptable level of service for this five-star park. There are other areas where there's some browning or maybe some yellowing, and to me, that is acceptable when we've had three months of no rain and triple-digit temperatures, I'll be, I'll be completely honest. But that level on that hillside and some other areas that are, that are not under our parks' control right now, that's unacceptable, and we addressed that quite plainly and point-blankly to, to the contractor just yesterday, so. There will be a number of things that we have to perform under warranty work at the park, and in fact, we will need to close the park at the end of the splash pad season to just perform some of that concrete work and some of the roofing, or just some things that are, I'm not going to say normal, but they are with. We're just some things that are, I'm not gonna say normal, but they are with infrastructure of that magnitude, you have things you have to come back on. And to keep the public safe, we, it's just safer to do it with a little bit of a closure.
Well, tweaks are, tweaks are normal.
And, and maintenance just is, is a requirement of anything.
It is.
So.
We just gotta get ahead of it.
As long as we, you know, let the, the public know. If we can get that screen here, I'm gonna introduce an item on the, the agenda tonight as well. But as far as the water goes, we, we are actively asking residents to follow their watering days so that we can maintain the system and the, the delivery of the water in the distribution system. So far, our predictions are that we will have the supply of water needed to supply the water throughout the summer. But we just need to make sure that, that they're watering during the peak times. And it's interesting, even in the last two weeks, after we, we had a little social media presence and some enforcement and reminders, we, we noticed a change, even with just a gentle nudge to our residents to remember to, to water when they're supposed to. So, with a drought or drought conditions, usually that first year is not too much of a concern because the reservoirs do their job and it's that second year that gets us. So, we need a, a better year this coming winter for us to not, not go into overly worried mode. Any questions related to that?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
So, with the new restrictions that we put on in the last couple of weeks, residents are now out and about, more aware of who's watering, not watering. So, are we enforcing the large users like the churches and schools on when they can water? Because it's hard to tell our residents not to do it when those large users are watering in the middle of the day. So, are we putting the restrictions on them as well?
Yeah, we'll absolutely reach out to those if we see that happening and, and we will reach out via email to the, to the district and those managers who, who manage that. I don't have a church contact. The churches have actually.
They're on a different schedule, right? Are they on culinary?
Some, some are on culinary, but I think in years past, they, they have been asked to water on a different schedule. We're not asking them to water on a different schedule right now. And, and when you say new restrictions, there haven't been any new restrictions placed on, on residents.
Right, but we came out on social media and said during this, I mean, I don't think people were like during that time and there was some, like from the ten to six or ten to three, I think it was. I, I understand, but we were pushing that where we haven't pushed it so mu, so much in the past. So, now they're be, becoming more aware of the city overwatering, schools overwatering, churches over. Like now they're really becoming aware because I, and I understand that's been in the code, but then we did the push, like you said, two weeks ago to emphasize that, so we wouldn't run out of water.
Certainly.
So, if we're going to do that, can we be proactive in notifying the larger users? Because I think they should be under the same restrictions of not watering during that time because it's not a good look for us when we're asking the residents to, who are paying for that water. And I know the large users are as well, but it's just a PR thing, that if we're going to ask them, we should really ask everyone, whether it's a business, large organization. It's just, that's the feedback I'm getting is why can, why can't we and why are they watering? Like in the middle of the day and such a large acreage.
Snap a picture and send it to info email at pgcityutah.gov and, and we will get that.
Neil, can we just send a notification to them, an email, just saying, just a friendly reminder?
Sure.
Type of thing.
Yeah. You know, the, the churches seem like they've taken a, a, a more proactive approach in reducing some of their greenscape and installing some less water-demanding landscapes. And I personally haven't noticed that. I think that, that stigma has been there in the past. But if you see it or anybody sees it, let us know and we'll certainly reach out to them and remind them during those hot hours that we'd rather have our tanks filling during that time.
Okay.
So that they can recover.
Okay, thank you.
On the agenda tonight, oh, sorry, is there any other questions related to that? There's an item for Scott that he's gonna present related to an agreement with Utah County. I just wanted to show you the map associated with that agreement for road funding. What is it, Control P? Windows P? Oh, yeah, okay. You guys, just follow me up here. All right. So, so on the agreement is some funding for Utah County that we as a city, or I submitted a blurb related to eight hundred north and six eighty north. And that location is on the west side of our town. You can see right here in the blue is North County Boulevard and the intersection of State Street. So, the quick quack car wash is right there. This road is in pretty rough condition and we haven't treated it because the traditional treatment of preservation wouldn't be enough for these roads. Also, we're gonna put a, some utility work in this area. As I've mentioned before, most of our roadwork moving forward will have utility work associated with it as well. So, this is a great opportunity for us to have some funding available for the roadway. We'll gather the funding for the utilities and this project, the, the agreement makes the money available for next year. So, we'll design the project and bid it next spring and construct it. So, that's what the agreement that will be presented in the Maine City Council session is related to. Any questions related to the map or anything else? Any questions for Public Works? Thank you.
Good work.
Nice, you have anything for us?
Yep.
And Wendy?
Yep.
Okay. With that, that finishes up our reports there, so we'll ask for a motion to adjourn from our work session.
So, moved.
We have motion from Councilmember Chance, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second, with Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?